The Commissioner meeting of May 23, 2024 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Can I have a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney.
Here.
Commissioner Schick.
Here.
Director Space.
Here.
Commissioner DeGroot.
Here.
Commissioner Hayden.
Here.
Thank you. A moment of silence and a salute to the flag. And I would like to please observe the moment of silence for all those that have paid the ultimate price for our country. And I also would like to give my fellow commissioners an opportunity to say just a couple of words before the moment of silence. In typical order, I will start with Commissioner Hayden.
Give them a moment of silence for all those who pay the ultimate sacrifice overseas for our country, for our freedoms and liberty. God bless them and their families.
Thank you. Commissioner DeGroot.
God bless the many individuals who are serving, have served, and have made the ultimate sacrifice serving our great country. My thoughts and prayers are with them today, this Memorial Day weekend onward.
Thank you. Commissioner Schick.
Thank you. We are not entitled to this freedom. The freedom was paid for by the blood of the American soldier. God bless our heroes.
Thank you. Commissioner Carney.
God bless our freedom and thank you for giving that us and the ultimate sacrifice.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Number four, public statement. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 7, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices, and I always ask my fellow commissioners to please put their phones away. Number five, approval of agenda. We have one change to tonight's agenda. Item number 14S will be voted on separately tonight. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Stand by.
Deputy Director Carney, and a second?
One second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Number six, proclamations, certificates, and presentation. Commissioner Schick is going to read one for Augsburg Historical Society's 40th Anniversary. Judy Parentin is here to accept. Hi Judy, welcome.
Welcome.
Proclamation recognizing the borough of Augsburg Historical Society's 40th Anniversary. Whereas the borough of Augsburg was established in 1914, and whereas the borough is rich in the history of Sussex County and the mining industry of this nation, and whereas the Augsburg Historical Society was established on February 21, 1984, and whereas on September 20, 2014, the borough celebrated its 100th anniversary. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and honor the Augsburg Historical Society on their 40th Anniversary for all of the work they have done preserving the history of the borough of Augsburg for past, present, and future generations. Be it further resolved that the Sussex County Board of Commissioners extends its best wishes for the Augsburg Historical Society's continued success. By honor of the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Director Space, Deputy Director Carney, Commissioner DeGroot, Commissioner Hayden, and myself, today, May 23, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words for us?
I appreciate the proclamation, and we are hosting a dinner on June 1. I extended the invitation to Commissioner Schick to see if he would like to attend. Just checking with you. We appreciate it. Augsburg is a small little town in this county, being rich in history as we know, and all things fluorescent.
Yes.
But appreciate it. Our museum is now open once a month on Sunday, from 1 to 4, if you want to stop by, because we're making that more of our town history and letting the mine be the museum, the mineral history. So, starting this Sunday, we will be open, and the fourth Sunday through the summer so far. They will, we'll check our schedule. But thank you very much.
Nice. And what is the address?
100 Main Street in the parking lot of the school. It's actually more on the state avenue, but the building is in the parking lot of the main building.
Okay, nice. Nice. Can we get a picture with you?
Sure, perfect. So they can, and it's me, and, right? Oh, perfect. Are you coming? On the, on the, you might be reading what it's doing.
Want me to read you?
Yes. Move this way, come over this way. So you're under the seal.
All right, you go in the middle, I'll go on the end here.
There we go. Perfect.
Beautiful.
There go more. Thank you very much.
Did you stand back here?
Come over there. Way away from this.
Okay. We have a proclamation recognizing Bernard Cutler, and he is the 95-year-old graduate of Sussex County Community College. He was unable to attend tonight, but he's going to try to make our June 12 meeting, so we're not going to read it tonight. And here comes Bill Truyn, right in the nick of time. You're up.
You sure?
Oh wait, that isn't Bill Truyn.
No, it is.
I was going to say, you're freaking me out. Yes, you're right in time. You're up.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. He's got ready New Jersey presentation.
Did you get a handout?
Yes, we got it via email. Yes, we did. Thank you.
So, I'm the Sussex County historian, and I'm glad to be here today. I got held up because of the Route 94 detoured through Beaver Run. And part of our work for the next two years is the recognition that in two years from now, July 4, 2026, will be the 250th Anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. And so, made us a free country, and some of us are old enough to remember 1976, and there was a very big demonstration, parades. Historical societies got to be reinvigorated, and we still have the ripple effects of that now. Some people who are older are still with us, and they got interested in our country's history through the 1976 200th Anniversary. But here we are, 50 years later, and it's time again for us to do it. Takes a lot of effort to put it forward, so it's really two years out, and I'd like to start letting people know on a day-by-day basis, next year in April, holiday beers ride, April 18, 1875, which will be next year. So, that's the program, and New Jersey State also recognizes that, and they're promoting it as well. And it is national, too. They have come out with a proclamation, a boilerplate proclamation, that can be taken and massaged by municipalities and counties to recognize it for purposes of showing that they're in support. There's a proclamation template that has been handed to the county commissioners by me, and I'd suggest or be interested if they would support the program like that for us to move forward. Some of the municipalities in the county, four or five of them already, have done their own custom-made, more or less following the template of the proclamation. And I'd like to see the county commissioners, if they're interested, to support that. That's...
Thank you. So how do we move forward with this? Is this something that...
So this was something I addressed in my Commissioner comments last meeting. I drafted that resolution for you guys to review, and basically, if there was any questions on that in regard to the equivalence to the proclamation that Bill Truyn has talked about, they can be addressed at this moment. There's, you know, if we have to table it for now, that's no problem at all, but essentially, what I provided you all last meeting was just a revised version of the state template proclamation for Rev. 250, really bringing it to a Sussex County level, similar to what Monmouth County did a year ago, per se. I know Bill has been working hard. I attended a Rev. 250 type of meeting, and they're very eager to just have our support. And yeah, that's why I drafted it.
Should we put it on the agenda for the next meeting? We can get it on the agenda so that, and then we can vote on it? Does that sound good?
Yeah, it sounds good for me.
Because then this way, it's like put on there, and then we know it's coming and...
Yeah, and I mean, if there's any questions at all, so be it now or, you know, whenever. But I think it's, you know, time that the county step up. I mean, July 2026 is going to, July 4, 2026 is going to come, you know, pretty soon, quicker than we can all imagine. And rightly so, I think it's, you know, time, especially with five municipalities are, you know, getting started, so I think it's time.
Sounds good. We'll put it on, we'll definitely put it on the agenda for next meeting. So, thank you. We appreciate it. Anybody have any questions for him? No? Thank you. Number seven, public hearing. We have none. Number eight, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment? Commissioner DeGroot, and a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Floor is open. Agenda topics only.
I have a question. I just look at the agenda items of DB Resolution for the purchase and CC purchase of vehicles. What are they purchased for?
What one are you talking about?
On the page six and seven. Authorized purchase of model 25 for Explorer, Sussex County Prosecutor's Office. That's for the prosecutor to use?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And the other one, the transit cargo stand? It's on the bottom of page six.
BB, you said? That is for the office, that's office for fleet, so that's going to go into the general fleet. More than likely, that's going to be used for the sheriff's office as well, for prisoner transport.
Okay. So we pay the prosecutor, plus we provide a vehicle for him?
Prosecutor, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is for transporting the...
No, I'm back to CC on page seven.
Oh, CC.
The prosecutor vehicle.
Yeah, when they're going to, they go to court, don't they? In Morristown?
And also, they respond. We have detectives that respond. We have, this is for the prosecutor's office, it's not for the prosecutor, it's for the office. And they respond, the detectives respond to issues and emergencies, and they have vehicles that you use for that.
Okay, just curious, because, you know, it's our tax payer money, who's using it? No joy, right?
All right, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Still waiting.
Okay. Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Number nine, Commissioner comments. I will go with Commissioner Hayden first, please.
Team volunteer at the library this summer, Newton, New Jersey, Sussex County Library System, seeking team volunteers ages 14 to 18 to assist with the upcoming summer reading program, adventure begins at the library. Teams looking for service hours this summer can apply online at the Sussex County Library Volunteer, paying more by visiting than at the library, right? Volunteer applications along with supplemental medical note and parental consent form are due no later than June 15. Applicants must also attend a team volunteer orientation at the local branch. Details on topics, dates, and locations and orientations are available at sussexcountylibrary.org/events. Summer reading program starts June 27 to special opening events at each library location and runs through July 27. Besides volunteering, teams are invited to participate in the summer reading program, bring books, bring raffle tickets, and enter in to win prizes. Visit sussexcountylibrary.org/summerreading for more information on 2024 summer reading program. All of these programs are free, and all prize winners must have a library card.
Commissioner Schick?
Thank you. So I've had a busy week around veterans. I've visited a number of installations, one in Stanhope for the county meeting, one in Newton, and one in Sparta at the VFW, and they're all voicing concerns about different programs that we should look into to help the veterans. So I told them, I took some notes, and I told them I would get back to them. I believe that some of the transportation issues are already being covered, and I wanted to go over that with Ron before I answered them. I attended the Unified Sports Program Prom, their very first prom. Unified Sports is where a young person joins with a special needs child of their high school, and they train together in sports programs. Could be a team of swimmers, or track meet, or basketball. Sparta's Unify has actually won their league, and they qualified in their track and field for the Special Olympics. Being with them at their first-ever prom, I learned a lot about what they do and how many towns in Sussex actually have this program. So it'll be something I'm going to be more involved in. I visited and spoke with many people at the block party and the back home, and of course, on Freedom Day. And let's not forget about the Vo-Tech Board of Ed meeting that we attended and heard from the public, and I thought it was a pretty productive, very productive meeting. So for me, outside of my love for seniors and my vocation, I work with seniors outside of the Commissioner Board. The Older American Event was amazing, and I thought Commissioner Carney did a great job with the proclamation, and I just thought it was a well-run event, Lorraine, I want to give you all the credit. But it was really one of the more stellar events that I've been a part of in many years. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes. To begin, the Farmland Preservation Revitalization Tour recently hit a stop, actually, last night at Freedom's Committee meeting. The committee was more than happy to be educated on the recent updates to the program and help the initiative of preserving farmland here in Sussex County. Just reiterate, as of today, that marks 13 stops on the tour, and, you know, I'm pleased with the foundation that we've really established, receiving two farmland preservation applications in just five months. And just to remind everyone, you know, farmland preservation really does benefit Sussex County, and it does benefit the farmer by offering them an opportunity to sell their land development rights in return for a payment. That payment could be used for infrastructure, like fixing a leaky roof, buying a tractor, paying down their mortgage. Really, you know, is a great benefit to give them that opportunity. Sussex County's Farmland Preservation Program is helpful, and I will continue my work in educating not only farmers, but, you know, everyone on the updates with this. Additionally, progress has been made at Sussex County Community College in enhancing both the agricultural and cybersecurity programs. Cybersecurity is something bringing forth, you know, right now to you guys. But first, with agricultural program, this past week, I met with Hudson Farms to fine-tune the curriculum and expectations for the internship program. It was terrific meeting with them, and I can't think of Hudson Farms enough for their hospitality. The next steps forward really are myself and the administration at SCC are now making minor adjustments to, you know, the curriculum that we're establishing. And really, it looks like the agreement is soon to come to completion, which is very encouraging, and I have to report on that. Now with cybersecurity and their program, over the past month, I've been in communication with Checkpoint, a software and cybersecurity company, that actually offers partnerships with higher institution, education institutions to implement their Secure Academy program. Secure Academy provides a hands-on learning curriculum that prepares students for careers in cybersecurity. And this opportunity actually includes a direct, you know, hiring process with Checkpoint. This partnership is no cost to the college or to the county, and truly benefits Sussex County Community College students by allowing them to directly enter the program and have job opportunities coming out in that two-year period. This partnership can be compared to other partnerships already established between SCC. One of them is the optics program with door laps, you can think of it that way. But I'm pleased to report this progress with you, to my fellow commissioners, and of course, that will keep you updated on my behalf. For the Division of Health, for the Office of Environmental Health, the Office of Environmental Health has been busy conducting temporary food vendor inspections and contacting recreational bathing facilities in preparation for the upcoming summer season. As the weather becomes warmer, communities host more activities, which often include food vendors and markets. The Office of Environmental Health must review and approve temporary food vendors before they can participate in these events. Approximately 14 events will be held over the several, next several weeks with multiple vendors and weekly farmers markets in Sparta. There are nearly 200 recreational bathing facilities in Sussex County such as beaches, pools, wading pools, hot tubs, splash pads, and water parks. At the beginning of each spring, Environmental Health contacts these facilities to establish communication and inform them of the necessary requirements for obtaining permits to operate for the season. The Office carefully reviews all documentation submitted, and once everything required has been provided, a permit can be issued. As the season begins, the Office conducts operational inspection at each facility. In addition, during the first quarter of 2024, the Office of Environmental Health inspected all registered tanning facilities in Sussex County to establish minimum safety and sanitation standards, further operation, and to protect consumer health and safety. For additional information about the services provided by the Office of Environmental Health, visit the Sussex County website at www.sussex nj.us. And last but not least, the Division of Senior Services. The Senior Services Caregiver Support Group meeting will be held virtually by Zoom from 2:00 to 3:00 PM on Friday, June 7, 2024. This group's helped to reduce negative effects of stress and increases the physical and psychological wellness of the caregiver. It also provides information about programs and services available to the caregiver, information on how to access these services, and provides referrals as necessary. Please call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1288, to obtain additional information or to register to attend these meetings. Thank you, that's all. God bless.
Thank you. Deputy Director Carney?
Thank you. Sussex County Division of Public Works. DPW crews began their first round of roadside buffer mowing operations, utilizing two different types of mowers, including a side mower and an over-the-rail mower. Each of our eight district garages are assigned a mower responsible for the maintenance of the county road buffers within their district. Typically, it requires between six to eight weeks for a district to complete its round of mowing. Road jobs then monitored throughout the growing season with subsequent mowing as required and resources allowed. Crews also work to maintain clear sightlines at intersections. So for you candidates out there putting signs out, you might be losing some signs to the Sussex County Division of Transportation Operations, County Route 521 and 610 pedestrian safety enhancement. Just going to breeze through this a little bit, I don't want to bore anybody. Existing school crossing signage was enhanced and reconfigured to be a dual-faced at the existing crosswalk near the Stillwater Elementary School. Existing pedestrian crossing signage was enhanced and reconfigured to be dual-facing at the two existing crosswalks located now where formerly Stillwater Presbyterian Church. New advanced pedestrian and school warning signage was also installed along County Route 521 and County Route 610 in regards to three existing crosswalks. The horizontal curve along County Route 521, mile marker 12.1, was evaluated and enhanced with six dual-sided Chevron assemblies, and a new dual-facing pedestrian crossing signage and advanced pedestrian warning signage was installed along County Route 610 in the area of Cedar River. I have a report that I want to read. This is important, this is something that we should be proud of. This is from the Order, this is an order report on behalf of us that will go to the rating agency. So this is a summary. Strong wealth and income levels that exceed state and national averages. Strong tax base, compromise of 83% residential and 11% commercial industrial. The top 10 taxpayers represent only 1.71% the total assessment. Net valuation has increased by more than 33% over the past five years. Fund balance increased to a 10-year high of $21.76 million in 2023 and currently represents 17% of expenditures consistent with adopted policy. The county has successfully improved its financial position, including fund balance and other reserves, over the past 10 years. The county is well positioned to mitigate effects from an economic downturn or any unforeseen event. Strong financial management as evidenced by formal adopted policies, low and decreasing debt burden with rapid repayment of principal. The county has significantly increased its pay-as-you-go capital and reduced reliance on debt issuance. So, because I feel like this was deja vu, I read this somewhere, I just want to read this, and I think this is really important. The county's net debt has declined by approximately 13% since 2019, and is well below the 2% statutory debt limit.
That's great.
So in 2019, just so you guys kind of understand, in 2019, our debt was $99,000, I'm going to round this up to $99,400,000, which typically, that's not bad throughout the state. I did check on that with our auditor, as odd as I'd found, and right now, it's at $88,300,000. That's a big difference. So, good job, kudos. In the last three years that I've been here, at least, it was at 91.8, and now it's at 88.4, we'll say. So, good job. That'll make our bond rating, I'm sure, as good as it can be, as an A++ run, right?
We will know next Friday at noon.
So that keeps our bond rate down, which is nice when we need to borrow, but we are doing pay-as-you-go.
It's like your credit rating. It's just your credit rating.
So we are in very good shape when it comes to that. I'm not going to take too much of Jill Stunder, because she was, she was the reader as director at the county graduation, but I did attend, it was an Irish mist, but it was better than being as hot as I was at the High Point Scholarship Dinner that I went to yesterday. It is my alma mater, and maybe I'm a tad bit biased, but they gave out $164,000 in scholarships yesterday, which was pretty amazing, because the last time I was there, it was two years ago, my son got a scholarship, and I believe it was like $111 million. So about 74 students got scholarships, which was nice, it was nice to see. A little hot, but we got over that. And as Commissioner Schick said, Older Americans Day, kudos to you, Lorraine, and your staff.
They do a good job.
They do a great job. Everything that you guys do is a great job. Our services here in Sussex County are second to none, really are, between the senior services, the veterans, everything that we do here. It's just ongoing, and really, kudos to you guys, as always.
It's our pleasure.
Yes, it's always nice to get a free meal once in a while, too.
Good meal.
So I know I've been talking about it, and I hate talking, and things don't get done, but the plaque I brought here a while ago, the Pau Mia plaque, is finally up in Milford. It's actually a headstone place, it's the only place I could find something that would match the green over here at the Veterans Memorial. So I'm hoping in the next week or two, that'll be mounted, and then we'll get facilities to come up with a base, and then we'll install that over the green, because that's the only plaque that we're missing. All the other branches are there, except for our prisoners-of-war-missing-in-action plaque. So, happy to say, it's going to be done soon.
Nice.
Finally. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Division of Senior Services Annual Public Hearing. The Sussex County Division of Senior Services will hold its annual public hearing at 1:30 PM on Thursday, June 6, at Knoll Heights Village Senior Center, 40 Trapasso Drive, Sparta, New Jersey. The purpose of the hearing is to receive comments on the proposed 2025 area plan update, which generates funding for Sussex County through the Older Americans Act of 1965 as amended. The public hearing will summarize the planning and contracting process. In addition, a presentation of currently funded programs will be provided. Several service agencies will be available to... Several service agencies will be available to provide information and answer questions. Attendees will have an opportunity to voice their opinions on current service needs for the seniors of Sussex County. Anyone who would like to testify at the public hearing or submit written testimony should contact the Sussex County Division of Senior Services by May 30th, 2024, at (973) 579-0555, extension 1382, or email seniorservices@sussex nj.us. Individuals requiring transportation to the public hearing may contact Sussex County Skylands Ride at (973) 579-0480, no later than 11 a.m. on May 29th to make a reservation. Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program. The Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program provides financially eligible individuals who are age 60 years and older with a $50 electronic benefit to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables at participating farm stands in New Jersey. Many local community farms participate in the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program, and each recipient will receive a complete list of the farm stands with their package. This once-a-year benefit is available at the Division of Senior Services, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Eligible seniors who are disabled and not able to come to the office can have an application and their benefit mailed to them. This benefit will be available from June 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2024, and must be redeemed by November 30th, 2024. For specific qualifications and to apply, please contact Senior Services at (973) 579-0555. I recently attended with Commissioner Schick, which he spoke about, the Sussex Tech meeting, and I spoke on behalf of our board, and we are committed to working with Sussex Tech and keeping that line of communication open, and that was the first stop of it. We can't attend all their board meetings, but we will try to periodically go to some and have our quarterly meetings with them, you know, two commissioners at a time. I attended a Board of Elections meeting last week, and one of the commissioners, Dan Perez, he resigned. He was one of the Democrat appointees. So the Sussex County Democratic Committee sent another name, and the governor has 10 days to sign off on that. And I do have to say, the Board of Elections works very hard this time of the year, and what we don't realize is that they meet weekly. You know, they're there quite a bit. They put a lot of time and effort in. And like Deputy Director Carney said, him and I attended the college graduation. I had the honor of being able to address the students and the staff and the families, and the power went out, not while I spoke, so. But it was a good night, even though it was very wet. I had a Sussex County Economic Development Partnership Meeting with Ron Tappin last week, and we do sign confidentiality agreements, so I can't comment on that, but it was very interesting. Commissioner Schick and I attended, at the Veterans Cemetery, a Gold Star Byway Memorial Event, and Hope Hackon Councilwoman Dawn Roberts' son, Sergeant Michael Chris Ball, who was killed in combat in Afghanistan in October 10, was remembered by her and her story of her son wanting to become in the service, and it was definitely good. And then, of course, Older Americans Day, which was great. Thank you to Senior Services and Lorraine Hens for putting on such a nice thing, and the turnout was great, even though it rained there, too, because all it does is rain. Okay, and I have one more thing. I had a letter.
Director, just real quick, just because I'm curious, the new name for the new Board of Elections.
Yes.
Do we have that?
We do not have that name.
Do we ever get that?
We will get it once the governor makes the appointment.
The appointment.
Yeah, and then that one's sworn in. But as of last week, no, so.
But they have somebody.
Yeah, they did submit a name.
Okay, well, that's at least good.
Yeah, that's what they said. They had submitted a name, and they'll have a replacement, because it's three Democrats and three Republicans, and in fact, they can't even, like, someone can't even call, say, Ron if they have a question. Has to be Republican and Democrat at all times, have to be together to keep our elections fair and clean.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have drafted a letter that I'm going to pass out to each one of the commissioners, and it is going to Philip Selinger, U.S. State's Attorney General, and Matthew Plankin, the Attorney General of New Jersey. And this is in regards to the Sussex County Food Pantry. Dear U.S. Attorney Selinger and Attorney General Plankin, I write in my capacity as Director of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners, with the approval of a majority of its members in connection with what is locally known as the Sussex County Food Pantry, here and after Food Pantry, I thank you in advance for your kind consideration. Although records are unclear when the Food Pantry was first established, it is undisputed that it has existed since in or about the 1950s. While the Food Pantry operates out of space provided by the County of Sussex in the County Administration Building in Newton, New Jersey, it is run exclusively by unpaid volunteers who place food orders, take food deliveries, organize and run food drives, solicit and receive food and non-food donations, like diapers, paper products, and the like, package and redistribute donated items, keep records, and promote the Food Pantry. While small-dollar donations are received rarely, they are processed and recorded in accordance with standard business practices. In the two years that I've served as county commissioner, I've not witnessed or been made aware of any impropriety, maleficence, misappropriation, misconduct, or illegal activity of any kind at, in, or surrounding the Food Pantry. I've visited the Food Pantry on a handful of occasions during my tenure, met with its volunteers, and as recently as yesterday, held meetings with select volunteers, county council, administrators, staff, and members of the county Boards of Health and Social Services, who interface and interact with the Food Pantry volunteers. Last year, the Food Pantry provided some 21,000 meals to adults and 25,000 meals to children. While donations come in all shapes and sizes via organized food drives bearing names like Stuff the Bus and Cram the Cruiser, they account for only approximately 20,000 pounds of food per year. The vast majority of food and non-food donations comes from the Young Green Foundation, here and after the foundation, in the following manner, and usually total between 8,000 to 10,000 per week. That's dollars of food. Food Pantry volunteers place weekly orders online for primarily non-perishable food items at the local ShopRite. Those orders are processed and packaged by ShopRite and delivered to the Food Pantry, palleted and shrink-wrapped, where volunteers unpack, divide, repack, and redistribute all the donations. The foundation maintains an account at ShopRite funded by the foundation, which is charged by ShopRite with each order. No money is handled by Sussex County, the Food Pantry, or its volunteers. A packing slip is delivered with each delivery, which volunteers reconcile against the online order. Then, twice monthly, the county and its volunteers send the receipts and reconciliation to the foundation for its records. While the foundation and/or its members or sponsors have their own account at ShopRite and occasionally order items for themselves, it is separate and apart from the Food Pantry account, and little else is known about it, since neither the county nor the Food Pantry volunteers use or have access to it. On the singular occasion of which I am advised that the foundation made a noncash monetary contribution of $50,000 to the Food Pantry, that donation was tendered and processed by the county chief financial officer in accordance with applicable law. Nonetheless, the county and Food Pantry have faced repeated allegations by one or two current candidates for county political office and others who say they are speaking with the FBI and requesting and providing documents to you in furtherance of, in some phantom inquiry into the Food Pantry, contrived for their personal political gain and at the expense of the families the Food Pantry serves. We have been cautious to speak directly to those allegations, other than to say publicly and repeatedly that no county employee or Food Pantry volunteer of whom we are aware has been contacted by any law enforcement's agency, state or federal, asked to provide documents, answer subpoenas, or answer questions of any kind related to the Food Pantry, its operation, or existence. We are grateful for the generosity of the many donors who make the Food Pantry possible. While we understand that we cannot speak to the actions or record-keeping of them, and we do not profess to do so, we also do not want to inadvertently interfere with any actual inquiry, if there is one. Therefore, this letter serves as notice of Sussex County's voluntary willingness to open its books, provide documents, answer questions, and cooperate fully in any and all manners necessary to end the baseless and persistent assaults on the county, the Food Pantry, the pantry volunteers, and 45,000 food insecure residents who benefit directly from the Food Pantry each year. Moreover, and to that end, we have packaged up and included herewith all documents that have been requested and provided in response to the mirage Oprah request regarding the Food Pantry, as well as the self-serving statements of the handful of opponents to its charitable purposes who claim publicly to be acting on your behalf. Very, truly yours, Jill Space, Director, Sussex County Board of County Commissioners. And I would like to ask county council, again, has the county been contacted by the feds or the AG in reference to our Food Pantry that you are aware of? No, thank you. And that is all that I have. And I do have a copy.
You're going to say that as if it's coming from the board. I think you need to ask for a motion.
Yes.
As you speak, as if it's coming from the majority of the board, so the majority of the board.
Okay, let me give them. Can I get a motion to approve this letter to be sent to the U.S. Attorney and the Attorney General? I didn't hear who that was. Okay. Commissioner Hayden makes motion, and can I have a second? Deputy Director Carney, roll call vote?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion.
Can I just ask a question, council? Paragraph, I think, three, four, paragraph four, I didn't know if it made a difference if we took out 11 words from here to there and replaced it with individuals and some instead of kind of specifically saying, does it make a difference?
I think you just spell it out for everybody to hear, so they can.
So instead of.
It doesn't make a difference to me.
Yeah. Just like, paragraph, like I said, one, two, three, four, second page. Nonetheless, the county Food Pantry.
Oh, yeah.
Have faced repeated allegations by one or two current candidates for county political office and others who say they are speaking with the FBI and requesting, dot, dot, dot. I just was wondering if we should replace that with, nonetheless, the county and Food Pantry have faced repeated allegations by individuals and some who say they are speaking with the FBI and requesting and providing documents to you, dot, dot, dot. So just taking out 11 words, kind of saying individuals and some. It's just discussion.
I think I like it the way it is.
Okay.
So if you're okay with that. Any other discussion?
That was a well-written letter.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Number 10, Approval of Consent Agenda. There is no consent agenda tonight. Number 11, Approval of Minutes, the regular meeting, May 8th of 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting?
Some move.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden, second.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Number 12, There's No Ordinance. Number 13, Appointments and/or Resignations, there are none. Number 14, We Have Resolutions A through HH. Okay.
Omitting S.
Omitting X, right?
Oh, yes. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve A through HH, omitting Resolutions 14S? Can I get a motion?
It's a move.
Deputy Director Carney makes a motion. Can I get a second? Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call vote. Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 14S? I'll make the motion in a second.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? A roll call vote. Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Abstained.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Number 15, Awards of Contract Change Orders Bids. We have A through F. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolutions A through F? Commissioner DeGroot, in a second. Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please? Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Number 16, Financial Payment of the Bills, May 22nd, 2024. Can I get a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Schick and Commissioner DeGroot makes a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Okay. And B, we have a resolution. Resolution determining the form and other details of the offering of $12,872,000 general obligation bonds, consisting of $10,72,000 general improvement bonds, Series 2024A, and $2,800,000 county college bonds, Series 2024B, County College Bond Act 1971, NJ Laws C12 as amended of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, and providing for the sale of such bonds and additionally determining certain matters with respect to the sale and issuance of $7,555,000 bond anticipation notes consisting of $2,550,000 general improvement notes, Series 2024A, and $5,500,000 vocational technical school notes, Series 2024B, New Jersey School Bond Reserve Act 1980, NJ Laws C72 as amended. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution B? I'll make the motion.
Second.
And I made the motion, and Commissioner DeGroot seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Okay. Number 17, Personnel. There is no, oh, wait, can we make a motion to adopt, to approve Personnel Agenda? Okay, I'll make the motion. And I'll make the motion, and then Deputy Director Carney will second. A roll call, please. Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Okay. Number 18, Administrative Report.
Real quick, yes, so it was a pleasure to go to the Economic Development Partnership Meeting the other day. While we say we can't talk about the individual activities that are going, it's confidential, but we did go over, almost over a dozen companies and investors that want to come to the county and invest in the county, looking for properties either to redevelop, build on bare land or those sorts. So I was really, really excited to see the number of activity that was coming in, and people are still looking to come to our county and invest in. And lastly, I sat at the roundtable, the Education, the Superintendent's Roundtable that was sponsored by Sussex County College. It was over at the Culinary Institute over here at McGuire. It was a breakfast roundtable meeting, and it was some of the local businesses that were interacting with the principals and the superintendents of schools and talking about how the college can align, how education can align to the business needs of future employees. And it was a very, very, very diversified conversation about how employees or how students are looked at coming out into the world now to get an employment. It varied from those that are, you know, using good communication skills that they're working from home with, that they have to maintain, versus the diversity of those people that may not want to go to college. They want to go and have a labor job or a hands-on type of job. And the education that provides them to understand how to run a business. What I was most amazed of was this was the very first time that anybody from the county had been at that table to represent the county and the operations that we have, and the most diverse. We're the third-largest employer in the county. we're the third-largest employer in the county and have a wide, wide range of classifications that the county employs. And to be able to interact with the educators, to say, yeah, we would be more than happy to speak with your guidance counselors, particularly at the early age, at eighth grade, where they're most impressionable about what they're thinking about doing in life, about the different opportunities that the county has. I said, it's, it's rich in all types of different disciplines, from, or all degree programs from all types of, of different things. So, starting in September, we're gonna be asking my department heads to go and speak to younger kids about the opportunities of going into the engineering department, or the road department, or senior services, or social services, or being a nurse in public health. So it was very refreshing to go through that and be a part of that. So that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. County Council?
Yeah, the only update I have is that our quest for documents left over from the pandemic from Department of Health, we do have a preliminary hearing scheduled for May 28. It's been postponed multiple times by the state already, so I've found a lot of confidence in it much forward. But we'll see what happens. I'll certainly give you an update at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 20, unfinished business. I do have unfinished business. I just wanted to ask Commissioner Hayden, did you ever follow through on your Oprah resolution?
No, because it was passed, so it was worthless at that point.
Right, but I, I read somewhere that, that this board refused student Oprah resolutions, so I wanted to go on the record, saying that there was never a vote up here at our last meeting on supporting an Oprah resolution, and you didn't follow through on giving us one to vote on. So there was nothing for us to vote on, so we couldn't refuse on something that wasn't here. So I just felt I needed to address that. Anyone else have any unfinished business? Okay. Number 21, new business. I just came up with new business while sitting here. Motions. When, when we're up here and we make motions, it has been overwhelmingly Deputy Director Carney that has to make these motions. And if we could have more participation from everyone else. I mean, I had to make motions today, because otherwise we wouldn't be able to pass any resolutions. So if we could just have more cooperation for everyone to make motions, unless you don't want to vote on it. Thank you, that's all. Have anyone else new business? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, number 22, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor? DeGroot makes a motion in a second. Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Thank you, I appreciate it. You okay, Earl?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. The floor is open.
Back again, Sandy Hall, Lakeview, New Jersey. I'd like to again thank you all for the opportunity to speak with you about the designation change proposed for the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area. In April 2022, you all passed your resolution opposing this proposal. Again, I thank you for your support. At a previous meeting, committee members were provided with copies of that revised proposal and our comments as to why we object to it. Recently, Congresswoman Fantasia and Assemblymen in Gannon Mord have introduced AR 133, a resolution opposing this designation change and all future attempts for change. Senator Space has introduced SR 93 to the Senate, the same language as AR 133. I'm providing each of the committee members a copy of AR 133, the opposing resolution, and the contact list of assembly members. Sandyson Township passed a resolution this past Tuesday opposing the new proposal's designation change. The committee also passed a resolution supporting AR 133 and AR and SR 93. Copies of both resolutions are attached. We are asking you to pass another resolution opposing this designation change based on the revised proposal, which was issued in September of 2023, and a resolution also supporting AR 133 and SR 93. I have copies of those for you also. I'm also asking you to address members of the New Jersey Assembly, asking them to support this resolution. I've been doing this for two years. I have the support, as you know, of Congressman Cartwright in Pennsylvania, Congressman Kane in Godheimer in New Jersey. I've been around to about 14 different municipalities in New Jersey, to get, in Sussex County, rather, to get their support. I'm going to address each one of them one more time, asking them to oppose this revised designation, which is really environmentally dangerous to the county, to our farmers, to our surrounding communities, to the infrastructure of our county, and also to Edwigna as it stands now. I'm gonna give you all more information to read. You know how to reach me. If I can have future, you know, future discussion with anybody, I'm always around to answer questions.
One minute.
And again, thank you for your support.
For the record, Director, Senator Space is co-sponsor.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Would the board like to get this as a resolution on our next meeting?
Yeah, 100%.
Thank you.
Okay, then we will, we will put it on for a resolution at our next meeting.
Great, thank you so much for your support.
Sandy, thanks for everything you do, as always.
It's like your full-time job.
This is my retirement.
We're looking for people in the county.
No, it's how I spent my summer vacation for two years.
Thank you.
Alan Henderson, Lafayette Township, I'm gonna commend you on your letter regarding the Food Pantry. This topic has been kicked down the road here for the last seven or eight months that I've come to meeting. I think it's time to address it, and I will commend you for doing that. If you have not had the opportunity to go there to the Food Pantry, I tell you, I go every Thursday morning. This is the first day I miss because of the storm. You need to go there and see what it's doing for our county residents. It's absolutely incredible how many people are starving here in this county. And I will commend you for finally taking action on that.
Hi, I'm sorry to be late. Just about to leave from Byram. I just had a few things. I'm wondering, for Sussex Tech, of course, if who determines the amount of people on the board there? Everybody I've talked to says it's the smallest Board of Education they've ever seen, so I'm just wondering. I know.
I think that's probably in our, our.
It's done by statute.
It's done by statute.
Okay, so that, I know it's been brought up even by the, the teachers there, that they want to have seven to nine. They want to run committees, but I don't know who gets to decide how many board, you know.
I'm one for smaller government, usually.
Well, and I would be too, but they can't have all these committees that they don't have today with five people when they're volunteering and all that kind of thing. But anyway. We're still trying to figure out the, I guess we can't really contact the individual board members. We've got to go through Jenny Doolittle to get to the board. The only communication that the school is telling us we have. So we're just trying to still find out, like, their term dates about Mothless Contract. I know at one point it was brought up if he had extended it when he wasn't supposed to, or if he did it early. We still don't know. The information I were getting, even at the Board of Ed meeting, he's telling us that he's working with Sussex County about getting, I'm gonna forget the word. Where you can take, my daughter takes English at tech, and she gets county credits for it.
Right.
He mentioned that that's what they were working on, but we have that. And I don't know if he was talking about a shared service and saying, a lot of the information he gave us is just completely off and doesn't make sense. None of the parents still have a full-blown understanding of the theater program. He tells some parents that the current freshmen will get to sunset in the program, while he tells others they can't. While he tells the teacher of the class, we'll see how it goes next year. Okay, we, so, we just don't know. You know, you hear one thing, he will respond to some parents, and a lot of the others maybe not. It seems the loud mouse, he'll respond to to shut us up, maybe give us something. So again, we're just still lost on a lot of information.
When is, when is the next meeting? Do you have a date?
I don't. I know it's in June. I'll find out, though, and I can let you know.
See, if you could get back to me, I will attend again as long as I'm free. I'll be away for a little bit in June, but I'll, I'll attend again, and I'll ask some questions. But as for the board members, we should be able to get that date, the terms.
The terms, it should be, I believe it's on their website.
Well, I mean, if.
I didn't see it on their website.
Oh, it was. It must have been taken down.
Well, it was on Sussex Tech, but it did not have the dates. I didn't see their dates.
Okay, then that might be a recent change. I believe it was reasonable, but we could get you.
That would be amazing.
It takes that off.
All right, thank you.
I know they reord November 1st, if I'm correct. Like, that's when, when their board reords, so there will be, I'm pretty sure there's one up.
That's what I've heard. And is there a reason, and I don't know if you guys know this, but I know you all have talked to them, all of the changes, changing the meeting time, maybe adding this parent committee thing? They're saying they can't do until, or they're going to look into doing it in November? Is that because that's when they can change?
That's probably where the November is coming from.
So they just can't do anything until then? Is that?
They could change their meeting dates.
They could.
I mean, their meeting times, because, I mean, we, we normally meet on a Wednesday, and here we are on a Thursday.
Right, right, right.
As publicly noticed.
Okay. They're stuck with the same ones we are, two weeks notice, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, she's right.
There's no reason why they can't change, that they just don't want to be.
I mean, we're here on a Thursday, and we're normally Wednesday.
Director. I missed eight more points. Director, when we sat down with Gus, he did say that he was gonna look into that.
Yes, on changing the times.
And do his best to change.
That's his answer.
And like I said at the, at that meeting, I love a four o'clock meeting, because I don't, I don't like to go out at nights.
I like to work meetings, but I know.
I mean, it's, it's not like it's every night, so.
Right, right, right. All right, well, thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll keep working on things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kathy Brennan, Hanson Tatcher, I'm here again for the same reason, calling for resignation of Commissioner Hayden. I've changed my comments a little bit tonight after what's gone on at this meeting. I want to thank you for hopefully addressing the concerns about the Food Pantry, because I know that's very necessary. As I've said before, I volunteer at another program that helps working families in the community, and I know it's really bad times. And this does not deserve a bad reputation. I also wanted to change another comment after listening to Commissioner Hayden's, I would say, hollow, insulting, and appalling supposed tribute to our military. Stolen valor is such a horrendous accusation. It shows total disrespect for the people who are actually serving. Perhaps this would have been a good time for Commissioner Hayden to come clean, apologize, and tell everyone, yes, I will resign. Again, I'm just saying, I think it's time, way past time, for Commissioner Hayden to resign. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business? Commissioner Hayden, and then Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. Number 23, reminders, please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules.